Please be seated. This is the May 28th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of May 13th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes from May 13th? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. I would imagine we do not have a student rep tonight?
Correct.
All right. Is there anything from the PTA tonight?
Nothing tonight at school.
Thank you.
PTA, CTA.
That's okay. Anything from the Parent Teachers Association? Nothing? Anything from Special Needs PAC? No? Is there any public comment? As always, we're happy to revisit that if we need to. So, we have the great pleasure and honor of recognizing some very important people for some great work. Dr. Meyer, would you like to lead that charge?
So, we want to recognize our retirees. This is our last school committee meeting of the school year. So this year, Clinton Public Schools has seven retirees, five teachers, and two administrators. I think this year, right, tonight, right now, I think we're joined by four of them. I know two teachers were unable to make it. So the two teachers aren't able to make it. So what we have is, this year, Mr. Morrison was able to make plaques for all of our retirees. So everyone will be receiving a plaque. This is actually made in our wood shop with the new CNC router, painted by our art students, and then finished. So this is a handmade plaque that they'll all get. In addition to that, we have citations from the House of Representatives to present to each of our retirees. So these two here I have, this one's actually for Moreno Loughlin, and this one was for Donna Beck. Those are two middle school retirees this year who are unable to be here with us tonight, so I'll get these to them later. Our first retiree who's here tonight is Scott Karpuck. So Mr. Karpuck, he's sitting here for a minute, I'll say a few words. Nothing too big. So Mr. Karpuck is getting this citation, recognition of 12 years of service at Clinton Public Schools. He was the tech ed teacher over at middle school. And I could always tell when he had different things going on. He'd have like CO2 cars and stuff out in the hallway, and the kids would be engaged, they'd be racing them, they had the whole track. You could hear the noise from the hallway, but it was a good noise. It was learning and fun, and I think you did a nice job of trying to make it an engaging classroom setting, but still made sure you were always addressing those technology standards as we saw through our MCAS results. So congratulations on your retirement.
I would just like to say thank you to the people of Clinton. Your children are just beautiful, and frankly, the last 12 years were the happiest years of my life to be able to teach in that building. Thank you.
Oh, hold on. You gotta get a quick photo.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're so fantastic in class.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
So our next retiree is Ed Howard.
Thank you, sir.
Ed might have known that these plaques are being made since his room was right next door. I don't know if you probably had the help, we'll see. So we're recognizing Ed for 14 years here at the high school. So he was actually, you were here when I was here the first time. So he's been handling mostly the ETF classes and really doing a nice job. That's been our science MCAS focus for freshmen for these many years. A lot of them all have their locker organizers because of you and all those projects. So once again, another great example of that hands-on learning that really was also rigorous and tied to standards, and you did a nice job. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We show up best.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks for all the hard work.
Next one is Sharon Collins. There must be a typo here because it says Sharon was here for 25 years, but I don't think you started teaching when you were four. So Sharon was another one that I had the privilege of being able to teach with when I was a teacher here at the high school. And Sharon does so much for the school, not just in our classroom interactions with the students, the formal interactions with the students, but so much of the informal interactions with the students and the staff. And she always was only to, always cared about them beyond the classroom and did summer reading and free stuff tables and goodies for all the events. So you're definitely a big part of the culture here, and you'll be missed. Did you want to protect your stuff?
Congratulations. Thank you so much for everything. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Our next retiree is Kathleen Buchanan. Kathy's getting her citation for eight years of service at Clinton Public Schools. And I think Kathy's another one who is a strong advocate for kids. And I think that that's one thing through my time working with Kathy is she cared. It wasn't just about getting through an IEP meeting. It wasn't just about, you know, checking off boxes. It was really about making sure that you were taking care of kids, whether that was their educational program, their home life, all those other things. And I think that, you know, she should be commended for that, really being an advocate for kids. And I know we only worked together a short time, but you could tell that really it was a driving force your whole career, and thank you for that. I'll give you a bag too, so you can put your plaque in it if you want.
I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Congratulations. Best wishes.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you for all your work.
And the last retiree we had was Mr. Hastings, so I know he's running late tonight because he did have to take care of some other business. But he will be staying on throughout the summer to help with some transitioning, so we'll probably be able to catch him at a later meeting. So I don't know if we do have some cake and stuff?
Oh, one more. Do you want to do that later?
Yeah, no, you can do this one now.
So I want to take this opportunity to recognize Michael McIntyre, who has served the Clinton School Committee with dedication since 2016. You have brought a tireless work ethic to this work, your advocacy for all learners, your deep passion and commitment to the town of Clinton is a testament to the type of person you are, and on behalf of the entire school committee, thank you. Now, can I ask one of you to make a motion to entertain a 15-minute recess so that we can celebrate with these folks with some cake?
I'm all over recess jokes.
All those in favor? All right, we will break for 15 minutes. Thank you. Let's have some cake. And we're back.
All right, superintendent's report.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead.
So we have FY '20 Budget Version C. Is it insert in your packet? As you can see, the budget booklet here that we've updated. There were just a couple of changes from the one you adopted. Mostly, they were done at, basically at the Finance Committee's request. One was, if you remember, initially, they had asked us to do a textbook and technology warrant article. And I think basically just to limit the number of warrant articles for the town meeting, they decided just to put that into our budget. So $100,000 went from a warrant article back into the budget. And then additionally, there was another $100,000 kind of added to our budget, and the bulk of that, $95,000 of it, went to sickly buyback costs, which was kind of the motivation. Like I said, the town had some one-time money. We also had some anticipated increases in Chapter 70 that we're not sure how long we're going to be able to anticipate seeing those in the future. So the idea was to try to take care of any future debts, I guess our current debts that we're defraying into the future. And then there was, so we did an extra $95,000 in that line item because typically, a lot of our retirees, we split it up into a $10,000 payment one year and a $19,000 another. So that was five retirees at $19,000, wiped off. And the last five, we just added to the salary line for the family outreach coordinator to bump that up from 47 to 52. So, for right now, the way it's budgeted. So that's the changes for Budget Version C. Like I said, it's really basically just those three things. So if you're comfortable, we can go with this, move forward with this budget for the town meeting. This is, you know, this is the one that's recommended right now, and I think that it's a fair budget for us. I think it allows us to keep moving forward. I think it also recognizes that we did get that increase in Chapter 70, so it's a pretty supportive budget. Hopefully, that trend will continue.
And I just have to say too, I appreciate the partnership in, you know, as a department within the municipal structure, and you're working with the Finance Committee in getting to a place where we're all in agreement. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on FY '20 Budget Version C?
Sure.
Just to clarify, the $100,000 for books and technology warrant article doesn't exist.
Correct.
Two, there were warrant articles, but they were more for the facilities. Do you know, those two are still?
I think there's one additional warrant article, I think it's warrant article 18. It's the one that's technically, this is the one you actually asked me to look into and who it was being sponsored by.
That's for the roof, right?
Yes. And so that's for the middle school roof, and it's List School Committee because the facilities department doesn't become an official department until next year. But it is, I think, the way it's listed right now, it's a school committee article that's Finance Committee approved.
And that's the only?
That's the only other article, only thing related to the school.
Thanks.
Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
All right, end-of-year district goals update. In your packet, there's this kind of a summary in what I asked, you know, we tried to put this together where each school kind of gave a little update of what's kind of been going on in their buildings. If you remember, at the mid-year, we tried to give you, it was a much longer packet where we actually had some agendas and artifacts and those types of things. For this one, I just tried to, you know, since we gave a lot of that documentation already, I just kind of did the summary. I feel like, you know, a lot of our goals, our curriculum goal, I think we've made significant progress this year, but I still think we have a long way to go, but that's fine. It's always going to be kind of a work in progress. The academic interventions, it's the same thing. I think we've really made some significant progress in identifying those and looking at, you know, identifying students and the appropriate interventions and tracking the progress. The social-emotional interventions, I put that as some progress. So we've begun work on that, but I think we have some more work to do. You know, we really, this year, I think a lot of what we did was kind of defining what we need to do. So I think that's someone we'll continue with. The meeting diversity is another one that's some progress. I think we're going to use a lot of the feedback from the tiered focus monitoring report to continue guiding our improvements in that area. And the student safety, I think we made significant progress. We're continuing to move forward with our crisis response plans, moving forward with, continuing to take the next steps in our Alice training, as well as adding the security cameras, the SRO. I mean, there's a lot of things that really, when you sit back and look at it, you know, like we did a lot this year. So that's an overview. If you guys need more detailed information, that's fine, but I wanted just to, you know, update you on those.
Any questions?
Also, in your packets, following that, you'll find the school improvement plans from each school. The school improvement plans have pretty much been, most of them have been aligned to kind of feed into the district goals or into strategic plan goals, so there's a lot of overlap. These are the plans that were created by the principals and the school councils. So this has had the input of, you know, parents and teachers, community members, or students, depending on the level and the composition of their school council. I know traditionally, I think, a lot of times, these plans are presented at like a tri-council meeting. We kind of shifted our tri-councils this year because we focused on data earlier in the year, and then we focused on mid-year one on kind of preliminary budget-type stuff. So we don't have the whole tri-council here to kind of share their work, but I wanted to just get those to you as they are developed. I wasn't planning on going through them kind of line by line, I just wanted to share them with you. I don't know if you guys feel comfortable just kind of accepting them as the school improvement plans at this point? If you want to make a, you know, make a motion to accept them? Or if you want to wait till, you know, closer to the school year or something like that?
It's the pleasure of the board. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the school improvement plans?
I mean, we don't have to, I mean, I would like some, a little bit more time to go through them.
Sure. Technically, I think the only school improvement plan we have to approve is at the high school level. But, I mean, we traditionally have approved the other schools as well. By all means, if you'd like to take some more time?
Yeah, and that's fine. We can just leave them with you now, and then at a future meeting, we can, you know, maybe the next June meeting, we can come back to them, and if you have any specific questions, we'll be glad to answer them, and then we can maybe approve them and set that path forward at that time.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so following the school improvement plans, there's one sheet that says Clinton Public Schools Physical Activity Plan for 1920. So this was a request of the board at the last meeting, so we tried to go through and just look at, you know, what we have in each level as far as kind of physical activity. So you can see the recess times, the times where they have the wellness class. And then the new thing that we're really going to be adding next year is more of a formalized activity break. So there's still an asterisk to that, and you can see down below, it says, "Activity Break Expectations Will Be Developed Over the Summer and Communicate at the Beginning of the School Year." So what does that mean? I think we have a lot of teachers that are using this activity break time right now. There are different things they use in their classrooms, there are things that have been set up in the hallways, little kind of, they're not obstacle courses, but they're kind of pathways or whatever that they follow through. And they're a little challenging. I tried to do one in the kindergarten hallway, but, so the, I think it was just too small for me. But I think the part that we want to do is formalize it as we go into next year. So making sure that it's a common expectation, that we've identified sort of, you know, making sure that all classrooms are implementing, whether it's literally the exact same thing or maybe sort of a menu of options depending on the day, but just so that we are allowing students to go ahead and get that break in.
Steve, can you give me a hand finding this page?
Yeah.
It's after the school improvement plans.
Right before the?
It's a one-page, right now.
Thank you. Easier.
So, any other questions on the activity plan? So, maybe it's a question for the principals. I'm assuming I know the answer. This is in addition to sort of the natural movement breaks that teachers sort of build in anyway? Just, you know, 20 minutes on, let's jump off, that kind of thing?
Right, so this would just be a way of formalizing it so we know at one point during the time, like at one point during the day, everyone's doing something similar. And like I said, when we had Mr. Van Ass here talking about food service, so we're also looking at, are there ways to kind of combine that activity break possibly with, you know, a second chance breakfast opportunity, those types of things? So those are things that we're still exploring as they went on their, they're going on their professional development and their tour.
Steve, can you talk a little bit about wellness and like what that? Now, is wellness like a mixture of physical activity and like health education, depending on?
Yeah, kind of depending on, so it is. It's like, it's exactly what it is. It's a combination basically of health and PE. You're going to be probably doing more PE at the younger levels just because of the natural attention span of those students. You're going to break things into smaller chunks. So one component might be, it might be a little bit of a health lesson, and then the rest of it's going to be physical activity.
Yeah, because I'm just, I know every minute is precious, and with, if we did want to try to push for more physical activity, I'm just thinking, you know, I don't, I mean, I may be way off. We may be, we may have to teach health. I don't know if there's like requirement by law that like we have to teach kids like of a certain age, you know, X amount of hours. But my thought just is, if, I mean, kids of that age aren't making their own lunches, they're not making that many of their own decisions. So I don't know if it would be something to consider in the future for, maybe at the younger ages, like really spending a lot less time on like the health education portion of it. I think it might be more beneficial for them to actually get, you know, some sort of a vigorous, because I appreciate what we have here, but like, you know, recess, you assume that most of the kids run around, but, I mean, they're not. You don't know. They could not. And I'm just, one of the things I would just like to take a look at is like how, you know, how much daily do we think students in the younger grades are getting on like a, like moderate to vigorous like activity? And it's sometimes like with the schedule, last year, I totally appreciate what you were trying to do, but I think I kind of lost it in like appreciating that, just the way the schedule would fall. There would be like some, you know, some parts of the year, and this is more with the middle school, where like there wasn't any gym. And in, you know, I understand it's still of recess, but especially like in the winter months, that's, so. I mean, to wrap it up, like is there, I mean, what I'm kind of interested in is a breakdown, and this is great, I appreciate this, but like, is there any way to break down, is it even possible to get like daily physical activity out of the students? Or is that, is that just impossible the way the schedule is? That there are going to be days where students are not in any sort of like an organized, like?
With the exception of like the 10-minute activity break that we're adding in, there are days the kids are just not going to get like wellness. And it's just the logistics of, if you have, you know, 700 kids in a school, they're not all going to get through the gym in one day. You know what I mean? So, and that's, and that's, I'd say that that's fairly normal. You know, I mean, it's something that you would be on par with how other school districts do it. I think to your point, you know, there are topics that you do want to, you do want to cover. I mean, I know they're not packing their own lunches, but at the same time, you do want to, you know, they are going to get exposed to what does healthy eating look like? You know, there's things like anti-bullying and those types of decision-making and those types of things that we'll get in there. But like I said, I think particularly at the younger grades, you know, really you're going to do more of a shorter focus lesson, and then they're going to be able to interact. I mean, the wellness classes, it's not like they're in a classroom for it in the elementary school. They take place in the gym. You know what I mean? So they're learning in the gym, and then they're running around in the gym. So it's all kind of part of their stations and the things that they're doing.
Okay. And I know right now, it's just kind of teacher-by-teacher preference, they are, some teachers are adopting that. I forget, there's a name of? Yeah, like that's one of them, where they try to incorporate physical activity like into the lesson. So maybe in something to consider next year or down the road, start looking at maybe ways to kind of formalize that, you know, at that level. Because I think that's kind of a, it's kind of a nice way you're blending your teaching time and your physical activity time, so you're kind of multitasking in a way. And keeps the kids engaged, and I think has them like be less fidgety if they can get some of that, some of that energy out. So, yeah, that's?
And I think that's what we'll try to do with those, like with that activity break where I say we're going to talk about the expectations. We'll develop those a little more formally over the summer, so that when we bring the staff back, we can share them. So that we do kind of have sort of that menu of options and kind of make sure that all teachers have those tools in their toolbox, right? Because sometimes there might be teachers who could benefit from doing that, but they might not even be fully aware of what like someone's doing, you know, if it's just sort of like an activity break not directly tied to the curriculum. So by getting these expectations more clear and kind of giving them a menu of things to do during that time, then encouraging them, hey, use this at your, you know, at your discretion. Like if you're having a long class and you just need a brain break, well, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I agree. I just think it's a kind of common complaint with younger children in school systems, and I think if we can just figure out a way creatively to incorporate physical activity more so into that age group, I just think it would be a little bit of a marketing advantage for us. And, you know, that's kind of where, you know, my head's at sometimes when being on the, on the marketing committee and things like that. So, yes, so thank you for this.
Like if they get something wrong and they do push-ups?
That's the military answer, right? Yeah, that's where you came from.
That's in my toolbox.
So, I want to start with saying, you know, I think it's fantastic that you're looking at addressing the students getting physical activity. You know, there's obviously, as we all know, a lot of studies to support that. Just a quick question. So for like recess and activity break, are we still okay as far as time on learning by adding those in?
Yeah, I mean, the recess exists already, yeah.
And then with the extra 10 minutes daily, we're still okay with the time I learn that we have to meet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, because we're over on the, yeah.
And do we have any wiggle room to play with?
I'd have to run the new calculations to see exactly where we are, because we always want to leave some wiggle room for things like two-hour delays and assemblies and some of that kind of stuff that comes up during the year. But we can double-check that.
Not to get on a soapbox, but I would argue too that the, and I know you know this as an educator as well as a parent, but the investment in the movement breaks where after a lesson, all right, everybody get up, let's do an activity together, you know, for five, 10 minutes just to get the brain moving, and then back down is an investment in time and learning where the learning becomes more meaningful, so. No, I agree with you. I'm not worried about it. If there wasn't time wiggle room, I'm sure we could add it into the curriculum, but I'm just seeing for right now.
And I think the state has even recognized that. I know even for some of the like, you know, breakfast in the classroom programs, you're allowed to count those as time on learning now because they recognize the importance of some of those other things, you know. So I think we'll be okay. But, you know, I just, and I appreciate that this is, you know, it's important that we're sitting there and we take time to reflect on this and discuss it, because you don't want to see, you don't ever want to see what happened, you know, in like the early 2000s when all of a sudden, everything in elementary schools became just math and English because MCAS came around, you know. So we want to make sure that we're, and I think that's the way the pendulum is swinging now. We're talking about social-emotional learning, we're talking about physical activity, and really trying to make sure that we're not just, you know, drilling killing kids in math and English.
Right, right. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, out-of-district transportation contract. So in your packet, you should have a copy of the out-of-district transportation contract with D Bus Services. This is, it's basically, what we did is we did a request for quotes for our out-of-district transportation. We had three vendors apply. We did the cost analysis, and the D quote came in considerably lower. They are our regular education transportation provider as well. But it was, it was good because the other quotes obviously would have required more of an increase in our budget. This allowed us to be fairly stable in our budget. So when consulting with our attorneys on the contract, they just said that if the school committee is okay with this contract, they can take a vote and authorize me to sign it, and we can go from there. There's not like a set fixed amount. Basically, what the contract says is they've quoted us what each run costs, and we're going to pay those runs. But obviously, like if a student were to move and we don't need that run anymore, then we wouldn't pay for that run. So we'd only be paying for the services that we used.
Quick question for you. And I know some of this language is pretty much locked in boilerplate from them. Is there language in here as far as the turnaround time when there's a new out-of-district student? How long it will take to get the run-up and going?
I don't remember specifically seeing a turnaround.
Can we look into that?
Yeah, I could try to.
You know, right now, there's a shortage of drivers out there, so.
Right.
I think it might be helpful for us to have some language in here that we can go back to so that the turnaround is not too long to get a bus up and running for a student who's maybe going to a standalone school.
Okay. If there's any possible way, what I would maybe request is that if you can approve for us to sign this contract now so we can get going with our summer, and I can look into doing maybe an addendum to it that just clarifies the turnaround time?
I agree. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the contract for?
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the contract for transportation services for special education?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? If they're being done, all those in favor? You unanimous, thank you.
All right, thank you. Following the contract in there, you should see this kinda like a one-page thing, it says, you know, providing new opportunities through connections and relationships, basic $350. What this is, is this is the, it's $350 for a basic Chamber of Commerce membership. So the Chamber of Commerce, they've been helpful to work with as we've done some of our workforce investment type stuff and those breakfasts, and I've, we've been able to participate in some of their events, touring industry. And it is fairly common, I guess, after meeting with them, that a lot of public school districts are members of the Chamber of Commerce, just to help them with some of their push to bring industry and those connections for workplace learning and those types of things. So they asked us if we'd like to consider being a member. It's $350 to join as a basic member, they said that's what most school districts, that's the level most school districts are at. So I just, I said I wanted to bring it to the board, I don't think $350 would break the bank, we can probably take it out of the memberships and like travel line for the school committee and just kinda go from there. So if you guys are interested, if you think it might be worthwhile to continue that partnership as we look to try to build with, you know, connections with the workplace, then if you're comfortable, I can sign us up. And it's not like we have to do it forever, we can do it for next year and we can try to see, you know, did we get, do we feel like that partnership was valuable and go from there?
North Central.
Pardon?
North Central.
Yes, North Central.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we join with you.
I have a second motion.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Is that like a monthly meeting you'd have to attend?
I don't think it's monthly, I think they have, no, it's not gonna be that demanding, but it's more, I think it'll help us with, they do a lot of nice events, kinda some networking things where you can, you know, I got to tour, and I came and toured, yes, I mean, that was a Chamber of Commerce event that I was able to attend, so, you know, there's some valuable things I think they do.
In trying to learn what job skills employers are.
Exactly, that's building those partnerships so we make sure that we're preparing our students for the jobs that are here. I mean, I think that's the biggest connection we're trying to make.
Just a quick question, the footer in their application is, it doesn't matter for us, the membership is not available, the company's 25 employees or more, they waive that.
Yeah, they must, cuz this is what they said, that we're allowed to join at the basic, this is the membership they recommended, the basic one, they said that's what most municipalities are and they probably, cuz we wouldn't take advantage of the other services in the higher-level memberships.
I think it makes sense to continue building on the partnership. Any other further thoughts? There's a motion on the table, right? I didn't just read that.
Yeah.
All those in favor? You unanimous, thank you.
All right, so the next one, there's no backup for it, just as a summer meeting schedule, we're proposing, typically we do one meeting in July, so we're proposing July 22nd is that meeting date, and then August would be basically the regular August meeting dates, the 12th and the 26th, that would have us come, that first, 26th would be the first time people are back. So our next meeting would be June 17th, because from here, it basically goes town meeting, election, then our meeting.
Reorganization.
And then that's the reorganization on the 17th. We'd kinda have a long break between the 17th and the 22nd in the summer, but there's a superintendent's conference down during that time, there's also a 4th of July week during that time, so, you know, that's, this is the date that seemed to work best for most of our schedules, if you guys are comfortable with those meeting dates.
Would anyone like to make a motion to set these dates for a summer meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on the dates?
Does this work for the contracts, their schedule?
Will that work for any outstanding items that we have to consider, any issues, any?
You think between the June 17th, and I forget, when we meet with them, it gets a while anyway.
When we meet June 4th, I think, I say let's not schedule a full meeting for that, if we need to call a special meeting to ratify something, if we get to that point, otherwise we can always do, you know, if we have everything ready to go by the 22nd, we could do that and just ratify at that point and we'll be fine.
Okay, good question. Anything else? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous.
All right, so the next one says superintendent evaluation, I just tried to go through the superintendent form and give you just sort of some of my thoughts on some of these things. Once again, it was kinda like the goals, I just tried to give you a quick narrative of things you might think about that, you know, what kinda ties to that as you're doing my evaluation. I know you're gathering input now, so I just figured I'd give you that, if there's any, if you have any specific questions on anything, I'd be glad to elaborate or provide backup. I just tried to kinda give you a snapshot.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent based on documentation that you've received and reviewed pertinent to the evaluation process?
When does this do again, Joel?
So, I had originally said June 1st, but, you know, we're not meeting until the 17th. If you can get it to me a week before the 17th, that's enough time, I think, to consolidate it. Does that work for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I sent both a, I think, a Word doc today, if you can't open it, let me know. And in addition to the rubric as well as Dr. Myers, the documentation that he's submitted, if you can't open anything, just let me know and we'll get it to you in a form that you can use.
All right, thank you. Just some last couple of updates here, the facilities department agreement update, I talked to Mike Ward about this, this is one we have to renew. So, the kinda the consensus at the time was we were just gonna kinda wait a little bit till the summer, because we got everything with the town meetings and elections and graduations and all that stuff right now. So I'll try to see if maybe for the June 17th meeting, we can have maybe a better sense of that. But I also think, Mike, you're on the facilities committee that we appointed, right? So at the reorg meeting, we'd end up having to put someone new on that committee, so I think then we might, you know, work with that committee to kinda get a meeting over the summer. And hopefully, you know, when we do have that layover between the June 17th and the July 22nd, hopefully we can get a few meetings in to kinda get some of this stuff worked out, so in July, we can maybe bring it together. So, you know, I think the last one I know was done kinda for three years, as sort of a trial, maybe at this point, we can go to something that's a little more open-ended with sort of a, you know, clause in there that we could request for, you know, if we wanted to review it, we could request 90 days' notice or whatever that looks like, six months' notice, I don't know, whatever it is, but something like that. You know, I think the facilities department's coming together, I think the, but once we get the next fiscal year budget in, we'll be able to look at that and take care of that. The next one is also the, kinda related to that, the indirect cost agreement, that's probably one we'll try to work on with the town and bring back to you to present. If you remember what indirect cost agreement is, essentially there are things that, people that work at the town who do things for the school. So for example, the treasurer's office or the town accountant, you know, they handle certain, you know, they have to handle some of our accounts, or they handle our payroll, or they handle our benefits, so a certain portion of their salary actually gets listed in our net school spending.
Is that what they call charge-backs?
Charge-backs, exactly, yeah. So if you're used to the charge-back term, that's, okay, that's, there it is, sorry, indirect cost, charge-back, same idea. So it's, so we just need to update that, particularly because we're gonna have to incorporate probably the director of facilities, now that it's its own department, we're probably gonna have to have some specific language about how that department itself is broken up, and then hopefully the human resource person will be on board and want to get some of that language in there too. The athletic survey, we did send the athletic survey out on Friday, we sent it via email to everyone, and I think it was posted on the website. So far, it was sent out Friday, I checked today, we have 72 responses already. So, you know, just to put that in comparison, we did the welcoming environment survey, we got 160 total, so in three days, we got, you know, about half that, so.
So we're doing the, it's on the website, are we doing any, did you do any of the, like the phone call?
I did, I just did it through email, so they had the link, but we sent it via email to every single person, kinda like we do with the phone calls.
Okay.
But we could do another reminder or something before, I let it, it's open until the end of school.
Okay.
I think we close it that Friday after the end of school, yeah.
All right.
Human Resource Director update, so I don't know, I can't remember where we updated last, I know the search committee did meet, they recommended some candidates to Mike and I, we've been in the midst of trying to just sort of schedule and continue to work on moving forward with those finalists, so, you know, we're hoping, I think we're on pace to, you know, we're trying to finalize some other things, but we should be on pace to hopefully have someone in the position for July 1st, that's our goal, and we think we can do that. So we just think that there are, you know, I think we have a quality pool of finalists, and we're just trying to make sure that we can, you know, find the right fit and make sure everything works out financially. And the last thing I just put in here, just a dual-language education conference update, so this was a conference that Mr. Sermack and I went to, it was down at Worcester State, put on by the, I forget the exact name of it, it's like the Latino Education Commission or whatever they have there at Worcester State, and really looking at dual-language programs. And if you're unfamiliar with the dual-language program, I know, I think they had, I think it briefly existed at Clinton Elementary School a while ago, where they had, you know, a grade where, a couple of grades, I think, where kindergarten and first grade maybe, where really as a dual-language program, the idea is, you know, you have a class that's, you're gonna have some, you know, English-speaking students in there, you're also gonna have members of like a partner language, say it's Spanish or Portuguese, and really the instruction is gonna be given in both of those languages. So that actually your, the idea is not only are all students learning the content, but all students are learning two languages, they're learning their English and they're learning the other language. It is, you know, a lot of the research and work on it now really is at the younger level, the elementary level, because that's really when students are developing those language skills, and they kinda, they pick it up, they assimilate it quicker. But it's, it's an interesting program, it's an interesting concept, and I think the best way they described it was really, you know, too often people look at English language learners, English learners, and view it as a, like a challenge, and almost like a drain on resources, cuz now we have to add ELL teachers or something like that. But it's really, it's looking at it from the flip side and saying, you know, we've gotta appreciate and value all the things that, and experiences and the knowledge that those students have, and really look at it and say, you know, it's great that they know another language, and we should be, you know, embracing that and teaching our other students those languages as well, and really developing those language skills. So it's definitely something, you know, there's sort of a change, I think the second page there has sort of the, you know, readiness continuum, and I'd say, you know, certainly I went from not knowing a whole lot about dual-language education to saying, you know, we're sort of thinking about this, contemplating, looking and saying, okay, this is something that, I don't think it's something we could pull off next year, but it's the type of thing that, you know, if we wanted to look at this criteria and the staffing and how we would do kindergarten registrations to start a dual-language kindergarten program or something like that, those are all things that we're gonna have to work on, you know, start thinking about and looking into now to have it ready for like a next year's kindergarten registration. So just something I wanted to update you on, it was a conference that we went to and just make sure, you know, that we're trying to look into those things.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
So for the athletic survey update, I don't know what the timing is of coaching positions, but have, is there any way that, cuz I feel like this would be a valuable tool for the athletic director, the results of the survey. So I don't know where he's at with interviewing and filling positions for next year, I don't know if it's possible for him to kind of delay until he can get some of these results back, cuz the intent of this was for him to have a tool to help him evaluate and make decisions for next year. I totally understand the welcoming committee survey took, you know, was a bigger priority, but if possible, I know, you know, he may have, you know, maybe there was a window and he has to make a decision, and if that's the case, but just if possible, if the athletic director could wait until he gets the results of the survey and use that tool as he's evaluating.
I'd say right now, we have some positions that have been appointed for next year already, for the fall and even some of our varsity coaches, I think, for the winter, just cuz there are things that are gonna be, you know, summer programs that they kinda have to help and sort of look at, but not all of them, and certainly not all the sub-varsity. So I think we'll get some feedbacks for that, and feedback for that and be able to incorporate that as we at least round out the applications for next year.
Gotcha. And I would assume that this would be something that, I mean, we have the form created, we could do this yearly.
Yeah, I think what we can do is we can look at the results, I think we can look at how usable those results are, and then we can try, cuz I think it was pretty detailed this year.
Okay.
Right? And then I think what we could say is, do we need to, is it, was that all great information?
Sure.
Or was it overload and we wanna maybe do a streamlined version for the future years and maybe just do the full thing every three or something like that?
Sure.
But yeah, I think it's, you know, it's, same thing with like the welcoming environment survey, I mean, I think it's things that, you know, you don't just wanna do them once and never again.
Right.
Make sure we're kinda revisiting them, maybe not every year or maybe in a lighter form, but, you know, keep coming back to them.
Understood, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Do we have any reports from any other advisory committees?
It's May, I think we see each other every night at some sort of other event, I don't think we've had time for.
That's true.
The marketing committee doesn't have anything to report. I mean, policy still has some things, some irons in the fire, if you will, but.
That's another one, I think we might set something up between the, if it's between the June and July meeting and just kinda clean up some stuff.
Right, right. Safety we reported on just in this month, as well as curriculum, so I think we're okay. Anything under old business?
There's one thing I'd like to bring up under old business regarding school choice, we had voted for school choice previously, and we did actually, we kinda consulted with our attorneys about this, and what we'd be looking for right now is a vote to close school choice for our elementary specialized programs, specifically our NECC programs. And, you know, those are ones that, those like our partner classrooms with NECC, our cooperative classroom with NECC, those are really our more, like I said, specialized, special education programs that really, you know, it's not really the intent of school choice that a student would school choice into those programs, it's really, that's something that would be developed more through, that should be developed through, you know, that's gonna be developed through a team process to determine the setting, and if we have, right now, we don't really have space available in the period, that's why we wanna close it. If it got to the point where we did have space available, the more appropriate way to fill those spaces would usually be through like a tuition agreement with another town, cuz it is such a specialized program. So, like I said, we did contact our attorney to make sure we were okay to close those programs, they said yes, so, you know, we're just, if anyone, if we get a motion just to close school choice for our specialized, elementary specialized programs.
Would you like to make the motion? Yeah, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion being made and seconded, any discussion?
Question, is there a reason, I know the demand is with the elementary, but just for the purposes of here today, should we be considering doing it for middle school and high school at the same time?
I mean, we could if that's the pleasure of the board, I think, like I said, the point that brought us up to it is just the elementary is where we really have those, we've made a substantial investment with the NECC programs, and we're really basically at capacity in those classrooms, so that's really the primary concern I wanted to address. But I understand your point is that, you know, it's kind of the same idea for those specialized programs K to 12, so.
Cuz I think if you have a program, as you're referring specialized program, there would be a benefit for us, you know, receiving a referral packet placement page, locking it in that way.
Yep.
And maybe that the main- And maybe the demand isn't there at the middle school and high school yet.
But it could.
But I would imagine as there's interest in elementary, then that will expand hopefully to middle school and high school.
Okay.
I, I think it's a prudent decision on our part to sort of safeguard the, the resources that we have for our students in Clinton that may need those specialized services, and certainly if, you know, if, if someone wants to contract with us because of the outstanding services that we provide, then, you know, they can pay for the privilege.
And that would also, you know, put in protection for the alternative school.
Possible, do we amend the motion?
Should I?
So, so.
We could vote it down.
Parliamentary crisis here. The person who made the motion can amend the motion.
I'll amend my mo, I'll amend my motion to include the programs at.
K-12. Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Anything under new business? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. I just wanted to mention the, the students that, that participated in the Memorial Day ceremony, both.
Indeed.
The parade itself, which was the band, and all the students were in the youth league, scouts, and I know some members of the board, including the superintendent, their, their children helped carry the banner all the way through the parade, but I hope I get the name right, Smee Patel, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they read the Gettysburg Address, and Ava Askin, who read the governor's proclamation, you know, these are students, and they get up in the middle of Central Park with that big crowd, and they were both very confident, did a great job, and I couldn't have done it in the morning. I had, Mr. Hastings gave me a student, Blake Martin. Who was up at 7 o'clock, 7:30 Monday morning setting up Central Park.
That's an achievement right there.
Then I was there or him. Well, yeah, I mean, he set up, yeah, they had all the flags that were up there, the 160 flags were up there for all the dead, that Blake Martin put those in in the morning, and, so I just appreciate the, the students, and they all did a great job, and I just want to thank you.
Well, and for what it's worth, I mean, thank you, and you're doing well as a school committee member and veteran's agent, and, but, but, but there, but it's evident how much you care about, you know, celebrating the service of our veterans on Memorial Day, and, and it's, it's a wonderful bit of role modeling for all of our students to see that, and, you know, I'm, I'm grateful that, you know, you, you made it work and, you know, brought all of these people together. It, it really was, I thought, a terrific parade and a, and a great turnout.
It was, it was good.
And a thousand, a thousand pencils given to participants.